Aloha, everyone, and welcome to the House Committee on Water and Land. Hearing today on February 1st, 8:30 a.m. We've got a speaker over there. This is our first hearing of the session, so we have a few technical challenges that we're working out, so please bear with us. Okay, so this is Committee on Water and Land. My name is David Tarnas, Chair of the Committee. Vice Chair Patrick Bronco is here, and Committee members, D. Morikawa and Sunny Ganneden, representatives both. And also online, we have Representative Bert Kobayashi. Appreciate everyone being here. The other members will join us as soon as they can. We're meeting in conference room 430 and also by video conference as well. The hearing today is for the purposes of considering numerous measures. And welcoming testimony from those who have provided it. We've gotten a bunch, we have quite a bit of written testimony. And look forward to hearing oral testimony today. For, in order to allow as many people to testify as possible, I'd like to ask all of our testifiers to keep their testimony to about three minutes if possible. And I will urge you to wrap up at that point. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to noon for the floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify in that event. Please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. I ask that everyone who is on the Zoom call here, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify. And then when your testimony is complete, turn your video off again. Thank you. The Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only, so if you have any technical issues, just use your chat. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, please attempt to rejoin the meeting. If you're disconnected while presenting testimony, you will maybe allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad internet connection on your side. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing and will schedule, perhaps a schedule, a meeting for decision making. In that case, appropriate notice will be made and will be posted. Please avoid, if you're using your video to, please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images. And of course, please maintain civil behavior, no profanity. Any such behavior, of course, will usher you out of the room. Thanks very much for maintaining our great sense of aloha. Okay, with all of that in mind, let's go ahead and start our hearing and begin our testimony on these measures. Our first measure today, House Bill 1653 relating to aquatic resources. We have first up, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Brian Nielsen with the Division of Aquatic Resources. And we also have David Secoda with DLNR, but I will turn to you, Mr. Nielsen, for your testimony. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony in support, offering comments and some suggested amendments for the committee to consider. Myself and David Secoda, Program Manager for DAR, here to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thanks to Mr. Secoda as well for being here, for asking any questions. We have supportive testimony from Leslie Farnell with the Organization for Forgotten Felines. We have supportive testimony from Lisa Bishop. Also, written, this is all written testimony from Phil Fernandez in support. Robert Likens with the Pet Industry Joint Advisory Council in support. Mr. Blake O'Shiro from the same organization in support. In support, testimony from Max Phillips, Center for Biological Diversity. And we have testimony and support from Ms. Inga Gibson from For the Fishes. And she signed up to speak on Zoom, so may I welcome Ms. Gibson. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
Mahalo. Good morning, Chair, Committee members. Thank you so much, Chair Tarnas, for introducing this important measure. Just wanted to reference a few potential amendments for the committee's consideration. As Chair and others are very well aware, there were a number of aquarium poaching incidents back in 2020. In my written testimony, I provided a table laying out the penalties that were given, the criminal penalties that were assigned to these defendants. And if you note, the criminal fines were actually less than 10% of the value of the animals that were actually poached. The nearly 1,000 reef animals. So we are suggesting that the committee consider a fine that would be commensurate with the value of the animals. The retail value of the animals. And this would obviously hope to serve as an adequate penalty, but also as an adequate deterrent for other, others that are considering violating the same. Of course, whichever is greater, because I know that the bill does provide for substantial increases in penalties, but they are not mandatory minimums. So that is our first suggested amendment. The other is that the commercial marine licenses are revoked upon conviction. And that there would be some process to suspend or revoke, or at least temporarily suspend CMLs during the investigation. To my knowledge, in the three cases that I referenced in my testimony, one didn't have a CML to begin with. The other two, their CMLs were actually, it appears to have been renewed during the process. And they have subsequently been convicted. And to my knowledge, their CMLs were never revoked. So it's been a little unclear whether or not DLNR has that existing authority. If they do not, I think that that would be a significant penalty and also deterrent to provide that to DAR in these types of cases. So mahalo newi and appreciate your consideration of these additional amendments. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next, we have testimony, written testimony and support from Angela Huntmer, Keith Neal, Robert Culbertson, Lynn Ryan, Vicky Parker Cam, Diane Ware, Darrell Tanaka, Maki Moranoi, William Chang, and Clayton Kubo. That's all the testimony that we have before us. Anyone else here to testify on House Bill 1653? Seeing none, let's go to questions, members, questions? If not, I, yes, Representative Kobayashi, go ahead.
Hello, I'm wondering if it's possible to have a fine structure that kind of echoes what was said by porno, porno advocacy, Ms. Gibson. Would it be possible to have a fine structure that says something like, let's see, up to $5,000 or the retail value for the first conviction, first violation?
Let's ask DAR, Brian Nielsen, or David Secoda for a comment on that. I appreciate, Ms. Gibson, that was your suggestion, but let me follow up with DAR about implementation of that suggestion. Could you answer Rep. Kobayashi's question, Mr. Secoda or Mr. Nielsen?
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, um, thanks for the question. You know, I think the current language would, would capture that. It's really, you know, if it's a criminal citation, then it goes before the judiciary and it's up to the judge to make that determination. And a lot of times, they don't have the information about retail value and, you know, for various reasons, they, they don't go there. But we also have administrative penalty authority, and we do take those kind of cases to the board. We did take these three aquarium cases to the board. And the board, we recommended fines that were based on the retail value. So, and that's, that can be done in addition to the criminal citation. So, you know, as far as making sure that the resources are compensated for, we can do that administratively.
So, the fine is by per specimen, right? So, there, what I'm thinking of is, there might be a big specimen, maybe a shark or a big fish. That would be covered substantial, I mean, would fall within one of these up to $5,000, up to $1,000 in subsection E.
Yeah, I, so in that case, I think an amendment would help if the maximum was, you know, reflective of the, the value of the resource, maybe the market value of the resource. I would recommend putting that in the administrative fine authority, not the criminal fine authority. But it could be done in both.
All right. Thank you. I'm not sure which is which. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Secoda, let me ask to follow up on that. You said both, so you would recommend actually including that in both the administrative fine schedule as well as the criminal?
I think the administrative fine schedule would be more helpful, you know, with the criminal fines. In practice, the, I don't want to speak for the judiciary prosecutors, but our experience is that courts tend to give the minimum fine, the minimum statutory fine, especially for first violations. And they don't consider the value of the resource in terms of market value. So I don't know how, how much the courts would utilize that if it was in the criminal statute. But definitely, we would utilize that if it's in the administrative penalty authority.
So that the maximum would be up to the market value of the, of the specimen?
Of the resources taken or damaged, correct?
Of the resources.
May I comment on this, Chair?
Not, not quite yet, please. Other questions from members on this matter? I'll come back to you, Ms. Gibson. Yes, Representative Ganneden.
Speaking of the mic?
Yes, okay, cool. We're all learning here.
On page four, it mentioned that this is going to be a petty misdemeanor. But the opposite prosecutor on various counties have the option of doubling a fine or turning this into a full misdemeanor. If, let's say, you are in violation of this act in addition to doing it in a specific restricted zone. So as a court appointed attorney in the district court, I've already represented people fish at Waikiki and been levied the criminal charge. Of course, with the misdemeanor, then we're facing jail time. Also, with this petty, I think it's pretty clear that most folks who are charged with this, by the opposite prosecutor, are going to be assigned an attorney through the office of public defender. Again, these are all tax dollars, so I'm just trying to balance the interest of saving the resource with how much is it going to cost the state through the judiciary possibly?
So, Representative, what's your question and what's your suggestion?
Can they double these fines? And can they, and can they turn the petty into a full misdemeanor the way they can with other crimes? Like, say, oftentimes a theft third can turn into a full second.
Let's give DAR opportunity to respond. Would you be able to respond to that, Mr. Secoda?
As far as the level of criminal charge, I am not aware of whether they can turn a petty misdemeanor into a misdemeanor. But as far as the fines, the current criminal fines are a floor. And the prosecutors can ask for something higher than the floor. And the, the courts can impose something higher than the floor up to, I think, the statutory maximum for a petty misdemeanor. So, but, you know, I'm not a criminal law expert, so I can't speak to your other question.
Okay.
If someone misses their scheduled payment date to the judiciary, you folks support the issuance of bench warrants? So jail time for, for this kind of, this kind of act?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to other questions, and I appreciate, Ms. Gibson, you would like to see it in both the criminal and administrative, and that was your testimony. Other questions, members? I have a question to follow up on Ms. Gibson's suggestion about the CML. Mr. Secoda, is the, is it, do you have the authority to revoke? Or first, do you have the authority to suspend the CML during criminal investigation? And the second question is, do you have the authority to revoke the CML upon conviction?
Yeah, the board has authority to revoke CMLs, but the, the violator is entitled to due process. And so it's not something that, like, if they're charged with a crime, we would automatically revoke. We'd need to give them due process and, you know, have a hearing on whether that's warranted.
Okay, but the board does have the authority to revoke CML, commercial marine license, once convicted?
That's correct. Yeah. And, and if the board finds, the, the board can find reason even short of like a criminal conviction. If there's like an administrative fine or, you know, penalty, they can revoke the CML. It's a board decision.
Okay, so they already have that authority?
Yeah.
Okay. No, Mr. Nielsen, go ahead.
As David Secoda can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they can revoke it for one year. I think there is a time limit on that. Is that, is that true, David?
Yes, yes, that's right. Up to one year.
Okay, thank you. Circling back to you, Ms. Gibson, you wanted to say something.
Mahala, Chair, yes. So in the three, I handled the, the three cases, working closely with the White County Prosecuting Attorney's Office that are referenced. And in none of those cases did the, did DAR, North Board, did DAR recommend revocation of those CMLs? So that's a big issue. If the board does have that authority, for whatever reason, DAR is not recommending that. I also wanted to circle back that in reference with the White Prosecuting Attorney's Office, they actually wanted a felony. They wanted to have the ability to pursue these cases much more aggressively. And they are the ones that actually recommended that there be not only a felony, but also that there be a trigger. For example, if the value of the wildlife that's poached is, say, you know, $750, which is similar to felony level theft cases, that would trigger a penalty two times the value, the retail value of the animal. And then, of course, if there's, you know, a secondary offense, or if there's a retail value, double that, say, $1,500. And that would trigger a penalty three times the offense. So I just wanted to make that point that they are definitely, and I'm sorry they weren't able to be here today. I hope that they'll be able to testify in the next committee. But they did definitely want a much stronger criminal penalty and fines commensurate with a value, but whichever is greater. And as, as David stated, in these cases, the judges are not, because they have that flexibility with the floor. It's up to, you know, $1,000. They're not actually issuing that amount. So, you know, I'm, so just wanted to add that. And if CMLs can be revoked, then I would hope that DAR would start to pursue that and request that of the board.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for that input. I appreciate all of those suggestions and the responses. One, any other questions, members? I have one quick question for DAR. In the testimony from Mr. Fernandez with HBAX, he was asking about for the first specimen, can you actually do the tiered system by different category of aquatic life? Would you be able to do that in the rulemaking process?
Yeah, we have our, our species-based rule chapter 13-95. And section two outlines how we define per specimen violations. It covers coral, live rock, and aquatic life, like in terms of fish. But I did see his testimony about limu, so that's something we could consider adding.
Okay, thanks. In the testimony by Mr. Tanaka, he was asking about, upon conviction, does DLNR have the authority to require the forfeiture of equipment and vessel used in this, in the incident?
Currently, we, we have statutory authority. There's been case law saying that the authority needs to be expressly noted in our specific rule chapters. So as we're amending and compiling our various rules, we are inserting that asset forfeiture authority. You know, it, it does need to be reasonable and commensurate with the violation. So we use that authority sparingly. But we are, you know, looking to amend our rules to use it more broadly.
Okay, thanks. But you do have statutory authority?
Yes.
You just need to do it, implement it in rules.
Correct.
One more question from Mr. Tanaka's testimony. He suggested that there be a geographical restriction. And I wondered if you have the authority to do that, or does that need to be expressly authorized in statute?
I, I don't know that the courts have the authority to do that. But, you know, I believe that's something the legislature could do through statute.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, that's all my questions. Any other questions, members? Thank you for your forbearance. This is a complicated topic, but a very important one. Okay, there be no further questions on this matter. Let's move on to the next one. House Bill 1900 relating to thrill craft. We have a lot of testimony on this. First, we have DLNR testimony from the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We have Mr. Ed Underwood here with the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, and Committee members. Ed Underwood, Administrator with the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. The department stands in support of this measure, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from Mike Moran, Kihei Community Association. Testimony, written testimony in opposition from Robbie Marino with eFoil Hawaii. Testimony and support from Inga Gibson with For the Fishes. Testimony in opposition from Matthew Elsasser. And he had requested a Zoom link. Is Mr. Elsasser on to provide testimony? No? Okay, he's not on, so please, members, please refer to his testimony. We have testimony, written testimony and support from numerous individuals. Robin Knox, Larry Stevens, Shannon Rudolph, and Dr. Mary Trotto. Then we have testimony in opposition from James Dvorak, who also requested Zoom privileges. Is Mr. Dvorak on? He's not available, so please refer to his testimony, members. Testimony, written testimony and support from Matthew Gravich and Madge Schaefer. Test, written testimony in opposition from Man Yuen. He also asked for Zoom linkage, and he's not here either, or they're not here. Testimony in opposition from Timothy Skinner. Testimony and support from Carrie Ballard, who requested Zoom privileges. And is Carrie Ballard here? If so, you have the floor. Please go ahead, Carrie.
Hi, hey, thanks, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Bronco, Committee members. Yes, I'm in support of this bill. I'm a resident of Makawau and an avid snorkeler. And I've been in the water many times with the eFoils. They're very fast. They're very maneuverable. They're extremely loud, although all the noise is underwater. And I have been, you know, closely approached. They're very hazardous. And they represent hazards to marine life as well. So anyway, I just think that just because they don't have an internal combustion engine and they have a battery engine, they should definitely be classified as a thrill craft. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have testimony in opposition from David Fimone. Testimony and support from John Pressman. Testimony with comments from Anne Pitcaillie. Ms. Pitcaillie, are you available to provide testimony? Yes?
Yes, I am.
Are you there? Please, go ahead. The floor is yours. Proceed.
Okay. Aloha, Water and Land Committee Chair and members. My name is Anne Pitcaillie. I'm speaking as a private citizen, speaking and testifying in staunch support of House Bill 1900. I'm a full-time resident. I've been out for the last 29 years, an avid surfer, surfer and enthusiastic advocate for marine life and water safety. I strongly support this bill to include the classification of surfboards using a motorized hydrofoil, otherwise known as eFoils, as a thrill craft. These motor, motorized thrill crafts have been showing up, or motorized hydrofoils have been showing up in South Maui and West Maui waters in increasing numbers. I have even seen them showing up in the lineup with other surfers, totally inappropriate. The more, the noise they make is audible underwater within an estimated radius of a mile or more, adding to the noise pollution that scientists inform us are under overwhelming undersea life. This is contrary to what the people in opposition will tell you. They, they can mask the sounds that whales need to communicate with others and to, for navigation and to locate prey, essentially for their survival. These move at speeds up to 25 miles an hour. I've personally seen them venturing out far in the ocean, approaching and closely following whales. I've also seen them closer to shore where swimmers snorkel, snorklers, kayak and canoe paddlers and people fishing, people that are fishing. Many of these operators don't have control. They lack the skills. They're a danger to themselves and others. Most are unaware of the threat to marine animals and other people. Maui is a whale sanctuary where humpbacks come to breed, give birth and to play. They depend on our protection. So they are, whales already struggle with pollution, vessel strikes and entanglement and abandoned nets and other marine debris. They, we don't need any more threats against them or the safety of other people. So I really believe that it is appropriate that these be classified as thrill craft. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Rafael Rivera, Kimo James Aquino, testimony and support from Pauline Pien. And we have test, written testimony in opposition from numerous individuals, way too many for me to read out loud. It goes on for pages. The total number.
You count them up for me?
I'll tell you after we count them up, how many are in opposition, but there's quite a few written testimony in opposition. And then we have testimony and support as well from Kim Ferris. And from George Burnett and Anne Rullero. Is there anyone else here on Zoom wishing to testify on this measure, HB1900? Seeing none, let me go to questions, members. Any questions for our testifiers today? No, seeing none? Let's move on to the next measure. Thank you very much for your, oh, yes, Representative Kobayashi.
Um, maybe a friendly amendment. The bill says this act shall take effect upon approval. I, I think that the public should be given some notice and enforcers should be given some notice, perhaps. It should be something like this act shall take effect upon blank days after approval. The blank days could also be a tactical move on the part of the committee to make sure that the bill comes back to the House.
Thank you. Good suggestion. I'm planning on defecting the effective date. Absolutely. Okay. We, just so everyone knows, we have received written testimony in opposition from 132 individuals. That's the total number. I understand that the YouTube channel started a little bit late, so let me just state again. This is the hearing on February 1st, starting at 8:30 a.m. of the Committee on Water and Land. For the purposes of hearing testimony on a number of measures, we first started on HB1653 and now we're on HB1900. Sorry for the delay. Welcome aboard. Yes, Representative Maori Kawa.
Just a comment. Thank you for that.
Just a comment. Thank you for that proposed amendment on that date. Because I have a lot of concern, seeing that's how much opposition came in on this bill. And your technology has taken us to a place where you can put a motor on almost anything, like a skateboard and a, you know, scooter, whatever. So I'm not sure if we should take into account those things. I have concerns about those windsurfer guys, too. I think they go even faster than those those boards. So I I'm just just a little concerned. Thank you.
Certainly. Appreciate that concern. Any other questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next consideration of the next measure. HB 1712 relating to agricultural lands. We have testimony and support from the Department of Agriculture. Do we have a representative here today to present? Mr. Morris Atta. Good to see you, sir.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas and members. Yes, the department will stand on testimony supporting the intel measure. We just don't feel it goes far enough because we believe that in addition to the A rated lands, that the B rated lands are worthy of protection as well. And that's basically our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have comments from the Department of Environmental Services. And testimony and support from Ulupono Initiative. Testimony and support from the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Testimony and support from Hawaii Crop Improvement Association. And testimony and support from Vicky Parker Cam. I see Mr. Brian Miyamoto. If you would like to provide any oral testimony, you're welcome to, on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Please proceed.
Morning. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the Water, Land Committee. Brian Miyamoto here on the, on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. First of all, Happy New Year, Happy Chinese New Year. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support, just a few comments. We are agreeable to expanding to be read events. The purpose of this bill is to protect our most productive agriculture lands, which are more and more having to do with competing land use. And from housing to renewable energy and now waste disposal landfills. So, you know, we believe that agricultural land should be used for production agriculture. And we should consider all other options before wanting to put landfills and waste disposal sites on our productive agricultural lands. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and support this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Miyamoto. Appreciate it. Anyone else here on our Zoom? Or who wishes to give testimony on HB 1712? Seeing no one else, members, any questions? Nope, okay, no questions. Let's move on to the next measure then. House Bill 1668 relating to soil classifications. We have testimony in support from Department of Agriculture. May I ask, Mr. Atta, please proceed.
Good morning, Ian. Thank you for hearing this bill. We, the department is going to stand on its testimony in in support and agree that the this measure will contribute to better information that we need. Thank you, and we defer to the the Office of Planning and Sustainability Development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have written testimony providing comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. We have testimony in support from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. And we see, I see Rodney Punakoshi. Please proceed, sir.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development has submitted written testimony in strong support of this measure. And so we stand by that testimony and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have testimony and support from the Hawaii State Energy Office. And I see Mr. Cam Black. Please proceed, sir.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We also stand on our written testimony and support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then finally, we have testimony and support from the University of Hawaii. And I see Dean Commerford. Sir, the floor is yours. Proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, committee. The College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources with the University of Hawaii stands on our support. And we also provide a couple of extra resources that might be useful, that might not have been known before. So we're here for questions if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's all the testimony that I've received. Is there anyone else here in our Zoom call wishing to give testimony on this measure, HB 1668? Seeing none, members, any questions? No questions? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next measure. HB 511 relating to real property. We have testimony and support from Albi Mateo, the Royal Canea Community Association, and testimony and support from Joseph Hammond. Those are the two testimonies that we received. Is there anyone else here wishing to give testimony on HB 511? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none? Let's move on to the next measure. HB 1602 relating to land liability. We have testimony from the Department of Land and Natural Resources in opposition. Mr. Ian Hirokawa. Good to see you, sir. The test, the floor is yours. Please proceed. Oh, Mr. Russell Suji. Yes, sorry, Mr. Suji, please proceed.
Ian will be testifying. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, certainly. Yes, back to you, Ian.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair, members of the committee, Ian Hirokawa with Deal in Our Land Division. Will stand on our written testimony expressing, you know, strong opposition to this major due to the severe liability that would impose on the department and the state and the public. And be available for any questions for the committee members may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the Attorney General.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm sorry, we've got some leaf blower outside my office, so I hope you can hear me.
I do hear you. Please proceed. You're fine.
So this is, I'm Karen Inagaki, Deputy Attorney General, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The department opposes this bill for the reasons set forth in our written testimony. And in order to save time, I'm not going to repeat everything that's in our testimony, but I would like to just highlight a few points. You know, this this bill runs counter to longstanding tort principles where the, in order to impose liability, there needs to be some type of wrongdoing or negligence. And what strict liability does is it takes that element out. And, you know, this bill, this this situation where you're simply an occupier of land or a tenant or landowner on a 20% slope is not one of the categories that the law has set out for strict liability. And also, as we point out in our testimony, it, there are it it's fundamentally unfair for a landowner who is unaware of the slope and does not know and does not have any reason to know that there might be some danger on this property. And if the landowner doesn't know, then a tenant or a lessee would have even be less likely to know the situation. And finally, you know, there are scenarios where there would be like the landowner above the 20% landowner's land, where they do something to the property and it causes down slope damage. And that person who did something to the property would would escape liability, whereas the innocent middle landowner would then be strictly liable and wouldn't even be able to 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 fight or or prove that they're that that they're not liable. So we see a lot of problems with this bill, and we ask that this bill be held. And thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Inagaki. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council as well. That's all the testimony that I have received on HB 1602. Is there anyone else here to provide oral testimony on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Maori Kawa.
Thank you, Chair. Maybe Dylan R. might be able to help me on this, but I'm just trying to understand what happened in Waimea with the recent landslide. It occurred under a private owner, but the degree fell onto county government road. In that instance, would the county be able to go after the private landowner for anything? It was, you know, not inadvertent, of course. What if it was a state property, too?
Well, I I think for the issues, I'm not too, I guess I'm not too sure because I'm not sure if the, you know, it would be, the question would be, I guess, did the landowner alter their land that caused the hazardous condition, right? That that resulted to the damage. So that, I'm not too sure about the, all the facts there, so I don't want to say. But I think that would be a key consideration that you'd have to look at, and I would lead that to the county to look into that.
Mr. Suji, go ahead.
If if I may add, Chair and Representative, and in addition to what Mr. Hirokawa said, too, as well. You know, if the landowner just owned the land and did nothing, and it was in its natural state and 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 it has a natural slope, right? And someone cut a road into the mountain, I think in that area, right? And and placed a public road. A lot of times in in on Oahu and other areas, the agency that built and maintains that road, you know, usually takes the lead on securing the area for the public. And it would be unfortunate if, like in this bill, the way it's written, the owner may have just owned the bill, land and had just a natural mountainous area not touched, did not do anything and would be automatically liable for its landslide. And and the road is put there, not with their approval. Homes are put there and not with their approval, etc. And that's why we think it's not fair, and we're opposing this bill.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions, members? Seeing none? Let's move on to the next measure. Thanks very much. Testifiers. Next measure is House Bill 1655 relating to special management areas. We have testimony with comments from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. It's Justine Nihipali. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, and members of the Water and Land Committee. Office of Planning stands on its written testimony with comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have testimony and support from Department of Planning and Permitting. That's the City County Honolulu. We have testimony and support from the Department of Planning from Maui County. Testimony and support from the County of Hawaii Planning Department, Mr. Zendo Kern, if he's available. Please go ahead, Mr. Kern.
Oh, thank you all so much. Good morning, Chair, Chairs and members of the committee. Zendo Kern, Planning Director for Hawaii County. I'll make this short to the point. I believe this these amendments to the SMA process, we support it. It will allow for an easier process on things that need to get done. Oftentimes, some of these small repairs, maintenance, etc. can get caught up in a kind of a process that takes a bit longer than it should. So I think this will allow various improvements that need to occur. Oftentimes, this is kind of governmental to governmental. And in cases that it's not, we're still looking at it, but I believe that this would be very beneficial. It also reduces our staff's bandwidth on dealing with a lot of these smaller elements. And oftentimes, we'll have to do a SMA minor for somebody removing some invasive trees, you know, in those areas. So we're very supportive of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kern. Appreciate it. We have testimony and written testimony and support from the County of Maui Department of Public Works as well. Now, that's all the testimony I've received on this bill, 1655. Is there anyone else here to provide oral testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Nope, seeing no questions. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 1431. Also relating to special management areas. On this measure, we have testimony from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. And we have Justine Nihipali again. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Office of Planning has submitted written comments. I'm also would prefer House Bill 1655, given the broad reach of this bill. I think 1655 has a little bit more of the specifics that we can better understand for continuing these conversations and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nihipali. We have testimony and support from the County of Hawaii Planning Department. Mr. Kern.
Thank you again, members. Yeah, we definitely support this, as Justine just eloquently mentioned. The other one's a bit more specific, but we do run into areas, even ADA improvements that go through a process that just, you know, don't make sense and take a lot, a lot longer than they should and cost taxpayers additional money. So I believe that these amendments would allow for a smoother process to address the needs that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. And finally, we have testimony in opposition from Douglas Miller. That's all the testimony I've received on this measure. Is there anyone else here to provide testimony on 1431? If not, members, any questions? Nope, seeing none? Let's move on to the next measure. Thank you. House Bill 1840. We've noticed a proposed HD1 for people to comment on. And so we've received testimony from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Rodney Punakoshi, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development supports HB 1840, including the proposed HD1. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we've received test- written testimony with comments from the Department of Agriculture. Do we have, yes, Mr. Atta, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the department will stand on its written testimony, expressing concerns that that A and B rated lands may not be entirely protected and would request that they be exempted from this measure, the effect, the effects of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the State Land Use Commission. Do we have Mr. Aura Denker here? Yes, we do. Welcome, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Tarnas, members of the committee, we've submitted testimony in opposition. We believe this bill is fatally flawed. Just a couple of quick points. Number one is, we're not sure what this is aimed at. There doesn't seem to be any evidence that passage of this measure will result in any significant changes. We also have concerns, and our primary concern is that this bill may not withstand legal due process concerns. Under the town case and more recently, as implied by the Monachea cases and its ilk, a contested case hearing is required for the conversion of lands from agricultural to rural or urban. As a result, this bill calls for such district boundary amendments to be made through a legislative process. We do not believe that that withstands constitutional muster. If for some reason this committee feels that the bill is to move forward, there are a couple of protections that we believe are are important. One of them is an addition of language to prevent parcelling, which was actually a part of the original omnibus bill that went through the legislature several years ago. We also have concerns with regard to the definition of affordable housing. It is our belief that 140% or 130% of median is not affordable housing. I think everybody's seen the recent information in the newspaper about that equating to about a million dollar home. We're suggesting that if the bill moves forward, that the definition of affordable housing be lowered to a smaller percentage. I believe our our testimony is to reduce that from 140% to 80% of median income. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Next, we've received testimony and support from the County of Hawaii Planning Department. Mr. Kern, please proceed.
Thank you again, members of the committee, Chair members. So we do support this legislation. We feel that it's essential to meet the needs for our housing on on the Big Island. We have a massive shortage of housing that we need. The process that we have currently in place allows us to do state land use boundary amendments if they doesn't, if it doesn't exceed 15 acres. So a process already exists there that we do, that has been done for many of years. I believe adding on to that with, uh, the additional elements of the bill will certainly help move that forward. I think seeing it from both sides of it, my time being in private side and my time being here, you see very little, very few applications, uh, going up to the State Land Use Commission, um, because of the process. And we see a lot of people trying to either avoid it, move away from it, or keep it underneath that fifteen acres. So it'll be handled on the county process. Currently, we have a project district zoning that hits fifty acres, which allows for a multitude of different zonings and kind of your TOD mix that we're really looking for. And so this would also, uh, put those into alignment with each other. And I think it would give the counties the authority to, um, to operate and meet the needs that, that they have, that we are very, very close to. And I really appreciate the effort and attention that's gone into this. Um, and we support it and we would really, really, uh, really be grateful if they could move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Uh, we have testimony in opposition from the Sierra Club of Hawaii.
Uh, good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco.
Please proceed.
Oh, oh, thank you. Uh, morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, Members of the Water and Land Committee, uh, Wayne Snack with the Sierra Club. Uh, we are in opposition to this measure. Um, I think I just I like to emphasize that the Land Use Commission process, uh, is different from the counties. It uses a quasi judicial process under chapter ninety one, uh, which means that, uh, basically participants can call expert witnesses, introduce evidence and have that data explicitly considered, uh, to identify, for example, natural and cultural resources, uh, public and cultural uses and, and values in waters and lands in Hawaii, uh, and, and to mitigate those impacts. Um, and so while this process, uh, may result in conditions to reduce impacts and avoid or mitigate conflicts, um, in the, over, uh, land use, uh, it also does not, uh, you know, hamper, as, as Daniel said, uh, Mr. Oriniger said, it doesn't hamper the affordable housing timeline. Uh, the Landis Commission actually has forty-five days before district boundary amendment petitions are automatically approved. And they have not yet, uh, failed to meet this deadline, um, I think, which is also a testament to the extensive, uh, institutional memory and the well-oiled machine that the Landis Commission and its staff, uh, maintains. Uh, so again, we oppose this measure and we respectfully urge the committee, uh, to hold it. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Mr. Miyamoto, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Members of the Committee, Brian Miyamoto, the Hawaii Farm Bureau. The Hawaii Farm Bureau recognizes and supports the need for affordable housing. However, we respectfully oppose HB eighteen forty, propose HD one. Um, don't want to repeat what previous testifiers just said, but HB, uh, the Hawaii Farm Bureau is opposed to eliminating the oversight of the Land Use Commission and its process for agriculture boundary amendments. Again, we want to protect our productive agricultural lands of fifteen acres is allowed, but I believe this bill is asking for up to fifty acres, which we believe in part is, again, to address our homelessness and our need for affordable housing, which we can support. But we do respectfully oppose this measure and we do also ask that this bill is held. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Miyamoto. Next, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii Realtors, Mr. Ken Hiraki. And finally, we have testimony in opposition from Ann Frederick, Hawaii Alliance for Progressive Action. That's all the testimony that I've received on this measure. Is there anyone else in our Zoom room that wants to provide oral testimony on this measure, HB one eight four zero? Seeing none? Questions, members? I, I do have a question for, uh, Mr. Kern. If you could comment, please, on the concern expressed by the Land Use Commission about the contested case hearing, the due process requirements under the town case and other that, uh, Mr. Oriniger had referenced. Why do you think that the county, uh, would be able to comply and, uh, make sure that those needs and those requirements are met? How, how would that happen?
Yeah, so that's something that we're in the conversation with right now with our Corporation Council and it's being worked out. We do have the opportunity for a contested case hearing at the commission. So any, any application would come into the planning department, would be reviewed against, uh, you know, the general policies, general plans, CDPs, et cetera, and then would move forward to the planning, uh, commission. And at that point, current, our current process does not allow for that. But I believe we could allow for a contested case at that point there, which we actually do for other permits that end there. Say for like a special management area, major use permit or a special permit. And then from there, it could move forward to the county council for the legislative action. So I believe we have the mechanisms there and if this were to be, uh, approved, we could refine that. So it was a system that worked and was obviously fully, fully in compliance with any, any law. That the goal is to obviously be in compliance, but to be able to move things forward.
And a follow-up question, how would the county process ensure that agricultural lands and other environmental values are protected?
Yeah, so, so when we look at an application, um, currently right now, if it's a state land use boundary amendment for less than, you know, fifteen acres or a rezoning, we look at it based on general plans, CDPs, other plans, as well as any HRS laws. And that's what drives the decision and drives the support. So if, uh, if a project came in and it was deemed, uh, you know, important ag lands, it was ALIS, you know, all of that, you wouldn't get the support from our department. And so that'd be negative. And as it moved forward, um, the commission and council would, you know, generally move in that, in that direction. Similar like an application could go forward to the State Land Use Commission that might not be supported. It could still be approved. There's no guarantee when it gets to that body. But as far as that process, which is holds true, it's all based off the sound land use principle. So if it were going to be changed from, say, ag to urban, that would be within the urban core. That would meet the Lupeg map or land use pattern allocation guide maps within our general plans. It would also be consistent with the, uh, CDP. And outside of that, if the decision is made, um, that doesn't comply with that, that's going to be subject to, you know, uh, legal, uh, legal review and lawsuits. And I, I don't think it would move anywhere. So we would really follow our standard land use policies and guidelines that we use currently for, uh, state land use boundary amendments. And we're happy to even provide a list of those and what those look like and what the recommendations would be. If that would be helpful for kind of the methodology that goes into these. So there is a process there.
Okay, thank you. Questions, other questions, members? If not, let me, uh, Mr. Orin Decker, I think you probably wanted to say something. Go ahead. Yeah, you're muted, sir. You could unmute yourself. That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. I, I had some technical problems at my end. My apologies. Um, I, I missed that whole questioning session. So, um, if there's something I can, I can, uh, answer, please let me know.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll, we'll, uh, nothing at this time. Uh, i- if you, if you weren't able to hear Mr. Kern, uh, I can't ask you to comment on what he said, so.
Yeah, I, I, I heard Mr. Kern at the beginning with regard to the fifteen acre pro and the county.
No, it was his, it was his specific response to what the county does to, uh, meet the requirements, as you mentioned, of the town case and other things. So, so that was what he was referring to just now.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'm, I apologize for the technical difficulties.
That's all right. That happens. Uh, this, I think we'll continue this discussion and we'll need your input, uh, as we go forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions, members? Nope. Okay, let's move on to the next measure. Thank you very much, testifiers. Uh, the next measure is HB one six seven zero sixteen seventy relating to land use district boundaries. Uh, we have testimony and support from the Land Use Commission. Mr. Owen Decker, the floor is yours. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee. Um, this, this bill is, is really designed to assist, um, landowners in it and, uh, facilitate the process. Recently, um, the Land Use Commission has been, um, questioned, uh, by landowners with regard to its determinations on the location of district boundaries. This is separate from a district boundary amendment process. This is separate from a, a special permit process. Is that landowners, small landowners just coming in and saying, where does my property? Where, where does the conservation line cross my property? If they disagree with us under present, without this bill, under present circumstances, we have to have an entire day set aside to dispute, to deal with the dispute. The Landis Commission in its entirety has to meet, um, Landis Commission in its entirety is actually quite busy. Only, and, and it could take six months or more before the dispute reaches the commission itself. Under this bill, a subcommittee would be available to expedite the dispute and render determination without having to go to a full hearing. And I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. That's all the testimony I've received on this measure, HB one six seven zero. Is there anyone else on our, in our Zoom room that wishes to provide testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the next measure. Thank you for the, the testifier. Okay, last measure is HB one seven eight eight relating to Waikia Peninsula redevelopment. We have testimony in opposition from DLNR. Uh, Mr. Kevin Moore, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair Committee Members. The, the department stands on its written testimony in opposition on this measure, but I'll just recap a couple of points. Um, first is, the department does have an ongoing request for qualifications, request for proposals for, um, two properties on Banning Drive. That's the former Uncle Billy's Hilo Bay Hotel and the former Country Club. Um, and we would ask that we be given time for that RFQ, RFP process to play out. Um, and the second thing is this bill would take away critical revenues that the department needs to fund its operations. The bill provides for all the lease revenues from Banning Drive to go into funding the planning, um, committee for this development district. And we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate Mr. Gordon Height is here as well and Mr. Suji available for questions, should the committee have any. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to, uh, we received testimony with comments from the Attorney General. Ms. Linda Chow, will you be presenting? Yes, the floor is yours. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair, um, Bronco and Members of the Committee. Um, we have prior comments regarding this bill and I'll just highlight a few of these comments. Um, one of our, our comments is that we're concerned that the bill may have, um, issues regarding, um, meeting constitutional requirements of, uh, it being a general legislation. Um, in particular, we, we looked at the two-part test that had been issued or by the court under the Sierra Club versus DT, um, case. And in particular, we believe that the bill may not meet the second part of the test in that there is no, um, adequate explanation as to why the Waikia Peninsula public lands are distinguishable from other public lands that may be in a similar, similar deteriorated condition. Um, it, the bill does not appear to sufficiently support distinguishing the Waikia Peninsula from other public lands for redevelopment. And we also would note that the, uh, Act one forty-nine from, um, the twenty-eighteen session, which created the Hilo Community Economic District, appears to overlap with this bill and that there may be some question as to the necessity for this bill where it is served substantially the same purpose as the prior Act one forty-nine, which has been codified as, I believe, HRS one seventy-one dash one ninety-one, etc. Um, we also have specific comments regarding the section of the bill and inconsistencies within the bill. And, you know, I can, um, answer any questions regarding, uh, those specific comments that the committee has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Appreciate it. Next, we have, uh, testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. And we have testimony and support from the County of Hawaii Planning Department. Mr. Kern, are you available for testimony? Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Uh, good morning again, Zendo Kern, Planning Director. Um, so this is a, this is a tricky one. Um, you know, as far, as long as I can remember, I'm born and raised here, Big Island. Um, Waikia Peninsula is needed, a tremendous amount of attention. Uh, Banning Drive needs the attention. Um, it is our resort node in, in the east, east Hawaii. And, um, something needs to get done. I know there's been a lot of effort and work towards getting something done for it to be helped. And I feel like this bill is in the right direction. It might need some, some adjustments here and there, but it is moving in the right direction. Uh, currently, if it was working, I think we'd actually have, um, you know, properties really being more refurbished and renovated, such as the, um, the Nani Loa got, got done. Um, however, there's been some decisions, um, that has basically, um, really marginalized the ability of those properties due to requirements that we have, such as parking requirements, et cetera, in the land area that's needed. And so the remaining parcels that are left, um, are quite challenged. And so I would be supportive of anything we can do to help this area. And again, this bill and this legislation moves us in that right direction. Um, I'd rather all come together on it, but at that same time, it's been there for as long as I can remember. And we need to continue to create some type of momentum there. And I think this bill moves it in the right direction. So we support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Uh, we also have testimony in opposition from the League of Women Voters of Hawaii. Testimony and support from Nathan Gaddis. And testimony and support from James McCully. That's all the testimony I've received on this measure. Is there anyone else here on Zoom that wishes to provide oral testimony on HB one seven eight eight? Seeing none, questions, members? Any questions? Nope, seeing none? That's, thank you very much, testifiers for your, uh, advice and counsel on this. Uh, that's all the measures that we have before us today. So I'd like to, uh, now move directly into decision making. We'll alert the other, okay. Yeah, we're just going to go right ahead and move into decision making. So let's now go back to the very beginning of the agenda and start with House Bill one six five three. On this measure, uh, members, I would propose that we pass a House Draft one. Uh, use the proposed draft from the DLNR Division of Aquatic Resources. I would like to change the effective date to July first, twenty fifty. That's two zero five zero. I'd like to, uh, incorporate the suggestion, uh, that Ms. Gibson made and Rep. Kobayashi suggested uh, the maximum up to the market value for the administrative fine authority. Uh, that is the maximum, uh, fine up to the market value of the resource that was taken or damaged. I would also like to include some language in here to incorporate the suggestion from Mr. Daryl Tanaka about geographic restriction. We'll work on the language, uh, with our staff attorneys here to add that, uh, to the, to the measure. So that, those are my recommendations. Members, any questions? Any questions? Uh, Representative Kobayashi?
Hello, when I made that suggestion about changing the penalty, I meant to include, um, the dollar amounts in the bill. Um, and the idea that, um, market value would be considered whichever is higher.
Okay, well, let's add that provision about whichever is higher.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so it'd be, uh, in, adding on to the administrative fine authority, maximum up to the market value of the resource taken or damaged, uh, or the fine stated, whichever is higher. Okay. Any other questions or comments from members? If not? Oh, yes, Representative Ganaden.
Thank you, Chair. My concerns remain regarding, um, uh, the possibility of stacking these by the prosecutor to turn them into a full misdemeanor, uh, which would, um, turn into jail time for individuals. And, um, I don't think that would serve as a deterrent or what we're trying to do. It, it wouldn't ultimately serve the intent of this bill. So just moving forward.
That's a good suggestion. I think the next committee is Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs and, and I think it'd be good for them to address this issue since they're more expert and that's their subject area. I appreciate your comments, Representative Ganaden. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote, Vice Chair. So it'd be House Bill one six five three, passing with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill one six five three with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ganaden. Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Kong is excused. Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Ono.
Aye.
Representative McDermott is excused. The measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, members, on to House Bill 1900, relating to thrill craft. This is obviously a controversial measure, but I think it's well worth moving forward in order to continue this discussion. And because of the support of DLNR Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation, and that they do have to go through a whole rulemaking process with this, I do think it's worth moving forward. But I would like to change the effective date to July 1, 2050. That's 2050. So my proposal is to move this forward with amendments. House Bill 1900, my recommendation is passed with amendments. Discussion, questions, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair. Oh, no, no.
I declined it.
Go ahead, Miss, Representative Maori Kawa.
Just note my reservations for now.
Certainly. I appreciate your reservations. Any other comments? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1900 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill 1900 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and Representative McDermott. Is there any reservations? Representative Maori Kawa, any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 1712, relating to agricultural lands. My recommendation, members, is to pass out House Draft 1. Change the effective date to July 1, 2050, and incorporate the Department of Agriculture's amendments, which is basically adding on to the lands as well. That's my recommendation. Members, any questions, discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1712 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill number 1712 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, members, on to House Bill 1668, relating to soil classifications. My recommendation is to pass with the House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 2050. That's 2050, and move this on to the Committee on Agriculture. Those are my recommendations. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1668 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill number 1668 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 511, relating to real property. My recommendation is to pass this with the House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 2050, 2050, and make some technical amendments. Any discussion, members, questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 511 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB number 511 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, on to House Bill 1602. This bill is not ready for primetime. I am recommending we defer it. Next, House Bill 1655. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, incorporate the amendments recommended by the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, and change the effective date to July 1, 2050, 2050. Those are my recommendations, members. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1655 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass House Bill number 1655 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, on to House Bill 1431, relating to special management areas. I prefer moving the bill that we just approved instead of this one, so my recommendation on HB 1431 is to defer. Next. House Bill 1840, proposed HD1, relating to district boundary amendments. This is an ongoing discussion. This bill, they've worked on it a lot. The county planning departments in several of the counties worked on this. Still not perfect, still has a way to go, but we need to continue this discussion. My proposal is to pass out an HD1. Change the effective date to July 1, 2050, 2050. I'd like to incorporate the suggested amendments from the Land Use Commission, very helpful. And I would urge that the next committees have a robust discussion about this issue of ensuring that the counties would be able to meet the requirements under the town decision and others that require contested case hearings and due process. Those are very relevant questions. We need to figure out how we can move forward in order for those protections to be in place and the counties to be able to do some of this work. So with that, my recommendation is to incorporate the proposed HD1, add the LUC amendments, change the effective date to July 1, 2050. So any questions, comments, concerns? Nope. Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, this would be on House Bill 1840 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1840 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Reservations from Representative Ganaden?
And Kobayashi.
And Kobayashi, thank you.
Yep.
Any no votes? If not, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 1670, relating to land use district boundaries, setting up a boundary review committee. My recommendation is to pass a House Draft 1, change the effective date to July 1, 2050. That's 2050. And move it along. Any discussion, questions, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, HB 1670 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB number 1670 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative McDermott and Kong. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. The final measure on our agenda, HB 1788, relating to Waikia Peninsula redevelopment. This is a challenging issue, it's a challenging bill. But it, I think we do need to continue the discussion on it. The area representatives really would like to move forward and figure out some answers to these questions. And also a way to make it fair to the state. So I'd like to move it forward with an HD1, change the effective date to July 1, 2050. I'd like to address the concern that was brought up by Mr. Gaddis that, you know, we'd not take the revenue away from DLNR. I asked the introducer for some language, and he suggested on page 17, under paragraph 1, that we, where it says that there is established a Waikia Peninsula redevelopment district revolving fund into which shall be deposited. The current language has the revenues, income and receipts from the public lands in the Waikia Peninsula redevelopment district. We would add the words "that is established by the committee." The originator of the bill thought that would meet the requirements to make sure that only the revenue from the establishments going forward and the public lands going forward would go to the district, but not the current agreements. They, I'd also like to make some technical amendments. The membership language is a little convoluted, so I think we can make some technical amendments to that, just to clarify. And I would ask the next committees to address the Attorney General and the Budget and Finance concerns that were brought up. They're very relevant concerns, bit beyond the scope of what I can do here on this committee, and I would encourage the next two committees to address this. And since it's going to Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs next, I would urge that committee to look at these issues as referenced in the Attorney General's testimony, Budget and Finance testimony, and DLNR testimony. That's my recommendation, members. Questions, concerns? Discussion? Representative Kobayashi?
Thank you. I too share your concerns, especially regarding the testimonies presented by AG and Budget and Finance. And obviously, I mean, to me, the revolving fund is not within the definition of what we usually consider revolving funds to be, but, you know, let's try and see how we can address that later.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We do need to address that. Any other questions, discussion, members? Seeing none, let's go for the vote, Vice Chair, House Bill 1788 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass a House Bill number 1788 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kong and McDermott. Is there any reservations? Representative Ganaden? And Representative Kobayashi? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, members and testifiers, for participating in today's hearing. There being no further business before this committee, we are adjourned.